Welcome to the August 7th Planning Commission hearing. I will call this hearing to order at 1:00. Ms. Carmen, can we please have roll call?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I'll begin with Chair Wardlow.
Here.
Vice Chair Boss?
Present.
Commissioner Barnwell is absent. Commissioner Bauckey?
Here.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
And Commissioner Wiscombe?
Here.
We have quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get started with preliminary matters. Requests for continuances, withdrawals, post-opponents, or ex-agenda items. Mr. Busk, do we have any?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We don't have any.
Thank you. And do we have any announcements or appeals?
Yes, I do have a couple announcements. I wanted to let you know that the appeal of the project at 418 North Milpus will be heard by the City Council this Tuesday, August 12th. Planning Commission did not make a decision on that, but you did see it to provide conceptual comments to the ABR. And then also, we have an appeal of 633 East Cabrillo Boulevard. That's the Hilton Hotel. That has been tentatively scheduled for council on September 23rd, and we do need a Planning Commission rep for that meeting. So I know you can also email us, but if that's something that you wanted to decide right now, we can do that as well.
Would somebody specifically like to go? Or do we want to do it over email when people can look at their calendars?
I'm available if there aren't any other takers.
Commissioner Boss?
Yeah, I'll be on vacation. I made the motion, or I would go, but I'll be on vacation then.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Boss.
Thank you, Boss. Okay. We are now on to the review, consideration, and action on the following draft Planning Commission minutes and resolutions for July 3rd, 2025 Planning Commission Minutes and Planning Commission Resolution Number 005-25 for 301 East Yon and Nolly Street. Are there any Planning Commissioner comments on the minutes of resolution? Are there any public speaker comments on the minutes of resolution? Great. No comments. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes and resolution, or do you guys want to separate?
I'll move both the resolution and the minutes.
Wonderful. Ms.
I'll second.
Great. Ms. Carmen, can we have roll call?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I'll begin with Commissioner Bauckey.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiscombe?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boss?
Abstain. I was absent.
And Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Great. We will move on to Item 3, new items, 460 El Cielito Road regarding a lot split. The applicant is requesting street frontage modification and a tentative subdivision map to allow the division of one lot into two lots. We have Ms. Pilar Plummer, Associate Planner, with us to provide a staff presentation. Ms. Plummer's floor is yours.
Thank you. If we can switch screens. All right. So I'm Pilar Plummer, Associate Planner with the City of Santa Barbara Planning and Zoning Division, and the first project that the Planning Commission will be reviewing this afternoon is located at 460 El Cielito Road and involves a lot split. So to the right is just a view of the main entrance gate to the existing property at 460 El Cielito Road. The proposal is to split the existing lot into two lots. Following the lot split, Lot 1, which is the upper parcel, will be 2.5 acres, and Lot 2 will be 1.5 acres. There is no development proposed with this application. The existing lot is already developed with two legal residential units, and following the lot split, each lot will contain only one residential unit. The required actions under the purview of the Planning Commission are a street frontage modification to allow Lot 1 to be granted relief from the public street frontage requirement, which says that you need 100 feet minimum frontage on a public street, which in this case would be El Cielito Road, and then a tentative subdivision map to allow the division of one lot into two lots, also for the Planning Commission to affirm the sequoia determination for this project. This is an aerial view of the project site. So this is one of the residents that's currently existing on the property. This is the driveway. You can sort of see it with all the oak trees that are scattered around the property, but this is the driveway access that's proposed to remain as is. And this is the secondary residence, again, El Cielito Road, and then Los Canoas Road. So as some general background, according to city records, the existing development was finished in 1936 and was comprised of two residential units, the main one and a gardener's cottage, as well as an accessory building. In 1995, the Planning Commission reviewed a application for a conditional use permit to address this issue of nonconformity. Because this is the RS1A zoning district, the general plan and zoning allow for one residential dwelling unit per acre, and as they had two residential units, it was technically considered nonconforming, even though it was built that way. So they weren't allowed to add on or address as-built work without getting that conditional use permit approved. As part of that application as well, a setback modification was approved for a carport that was added on without a permit by the secondary dwelling unit, and then an accessory building modification for accessory structures to exceed 500 square feet. I do want to note that that was the requirement at the time for accessory buildings, but since Title 30 was enacted, property can have up to 1,950 square feet of accessory building floor area. The justification for the conditional use permit at that time and what the Planning Commission found was that the site area accommodates the two existing dwelling units, and there is sufficient area for the two, for two separate lots. The uses were also found in harmony with the El Cielito neighborhood, which is single-family residential, and also that project legalized parking for both units. This is just a table to show how the project with the proposed subdivision will be consistent with the zoning use, again, residential. General plan is not changing, low-density residential. Lot 1 will be 2.5 acres. Lot 2 will be 1.5, and both parcels will be conforming to zoning and general plan designations. The requirement for the two lots, so for Lot 1, it's slightly steeper, at 29.07% slope. So they're required to have two acres. They're proposing 2.5. And for Lot 2, the requirement is 1.5, and they're providing 1.5. And as I already mentioned, one of the lots is requesting a street frontage modification. That's one of your actions this afternoon. So again, Lot 1 will not have any public street frontage, but will still take access off the existing driveway as has historically been the case. So with respect to the street frontage modification, this is the tentative map that you would have received in your packet. This is El Cielito Road here. Again, the secondary residence is here. There's the carport in sort of a recreation office amenity building that's attached to the carport. This is the driveway access, which goes up through the property to the other residence. This is Los Canoas up here. So in terms of supportability for this, each, each lot, again, is supposed to have 100 feet of frontage. But to do this, if they were to take access off of, say, El Cielito Road, which, or not El Cielito, but Los Canoas Road, which is up here, they would have to do grading on an area that has a steeper slope. We do have general plan policies that talk about avoiding grading on slopes 30% and above, as well this, this portion of the property. And if you went to the site visit, you would have seen there's a lot of oak trees on the property. We have policies that talk about avoiding oak tree removals if at all possible. So doing a driveway access off Los Canoas, outside of it being a cost issue, would, you know, potentially conflict with some policies that would apply to this project. It's also not just established with oaks, but it's actually mapped for coastal live oak woodland up there. So by taking access off the driveway via an easement, which is proposed, there's no physical change to the site, and the modification is necessary to secure the subdivision for this project. This is a view looking towards that sloped area, and you can see the amount of trees, very heavily vegetated. In terms of subdivision ordinance consistency, if approved this afternoon, the project will result in two lots that meet the density requirement of one dwelling unit per acre. The residential use is, of course, physically suitable for the site. It's historically been that way since the 1930s, so there's no change to on-site character. And again, because there's no change to the existing condition other than splitting the parcel, there's no damage to fish or wildlife, or their habitat, or public health problems, et cetera. In terms of policy consistency, it's consistent with LG14 to maintain and protect the character and quality of single-family zone neighborhoods as a low-density residential community, and then S18, steep slopes, because it minimizes, in this case, there is no grading proposed at all. So there's no, there's no effect on grading on areas over 30% slope. And this is just a view of the existing cottage. That's the secondary residence. The project is exempt per SECA Guideline Section 15061B3, which is a common sense exemption, again, because there's no change to the property itself, other than splitting the lot, there's no impact on the environment related to this. And this is just that existing driveway, which is being maintained with this project. So staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission is to approve the street frontage modification and tentative map, as well as affirm the sequoia determination. And that concludes my presentation for this project. The applicant is here as well to speak on behalf of their project. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Mr. Busk, would you please let us know if that, oh, sorry. My apologies. Okay. So we'll now move on to the applicant presentation. Please come up and state your full name and your relationship to the project. You will have 15 minutes. Ms. Carmen, would you please start the timer?
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Caitlin Ernest with Subs Land Use Consulting, and I'm here today representing the property owner, Brianna and Vicky Van Tock. And thank you, staff, for a very thorough presentation. I'll go ahead and give a quick applicant presentation, and then we'll be available for any questions. So as discussed, we're requesting approval of a tentative parcel map and street frontage modification to subdivide the existing four-acre lot into two parcels, one two-and-a-half-acre lot and one one-and-a-half-acre lot. And to reiterate, there is no development proposed with this request. Pilar showed a helpful aerial, but here again, you can see the main residence on parcel 1, proposed parcel 1, with the existing access driveway down to El Cielito. And then here are the existing structures on proposed Lot 2, the one-story main residence, a carport, and office. And parcel 2 has their own driveway with access to El Cielito. And we are proposing to maintain these existing driveways, and each residence will have their own access. An access easement is required for this one, since their driveway will be going through the slower lot. And as discussed by staff, a street frontage modification is necessary. As you can see, there were oak woodland and steep slopes up here, and proposing access would require grading and would possibly conflict with general plan policies. So the street frontage modification is supportable. And this is a helpful image to show that this lot is currently one of the largest lots in the area at four acres, and subdividing it would make it consistent with the surrounding Overall, the project's goals are simple. The owner wishes to subdivide the lot for estate and family planning purposes, and again, no development proposed. One benefit is that it will also clean up the existing permitting on-site and get rid of the conditional use permit that currently allows the two legal residences. Vicky has also communicated with her nearby neighbors, and there is no opposition to this request. And as staff outlined in their presentation, the project meets all requirements of Title 27 and Title 30, and the street frontage modification request is supportable. Thanks for your consideration, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Ms. Carmen, would you please let us know how much time the applicant has remaining?
The applicant has 12 minutes and 18 seconds remaining, if they choose to use it.
Great. If you'd like to, just let us know after we do questions. And that will take us to public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on this specific item?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. At this time, I don't have any speaker slips for in-person public comment on this item. And I believe everybody in the room is an applicant party, so I will move to virtual participation. We do have one participant online. If they would like to speak on this item, they can raise their hand at this time. But I'm not seeing any raised hands, and we did not receive any written correspondence for this item, so I'm going to give it back to you.
Great. Thank you. And we will now open it up to my fellow commissioners for questions. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Wiscombe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question, and that's for Ms. Plummer. You received my email regarding the changes to the CVA, and are they acceptable to, to you and to Ms. Ostringer?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Wiscombe, yes. I agreed with your edits, which essentially, just for the whole commission, since you weren't copied on that email, it related to construction, which doesn't apply to this project.
Yeah, okay. So I'll just, there, there's two of them, and I just, whoever makes the motion, I think we should just add them. They really are, on page 2 of the conditions of approval, one is 1D, and it would be to strike. Some of the conditions may be waived for demolition or rough grading permits, or at the discretion of the department listed, which doesn't apply to this project. And then the other one is page 2, the same page 2, 1D, small, small C. And that has some strikeouts regarding construction, three times, two times construction in the field struck out, contract, and/or by the owner and/or, and contractor struck out, and I put owner's agent, and then strike out for the duration of the project construction, including demolition and grading. I can pass these around if anyone wants to see them, but I know Ms. Plummer and Ms. Ostringer have copies of it. So that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you. My question pertains to Senate Bill 9. Is the reason why this isn't able to be ministerially approved and has to go through this process because in the high fire hazard severity zones are exempt from SB 9? Is that correct?
Yeah, through the Chair, Commissioner, yes, that's correct. So that was when we initially were reviewing this application, they actually did a pre-application first, asking if they could do an urban lot split using SB 9. And unfortunately, SB 9, well, fortunately or unfortunately, it's, yeah, you cannot do it in a high-fire hazard area, and this project is in a high-fire hazard area.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Any other Commissioner questions?
I said I wouldn't, but I do have a question, if I may. A couple, just to piggyback on what you're saying, so where would it have gone? Would it have gone directly, it has to go to council ultimately, correct?
Through the Chair, yes. Commissioner, after Planning Commission's approval, there will be an entitlement process with Public Works to approve the map, and that includes council.
No, my meant, if it didn't come before us, would it have gone to a hearing officer? Or it would have been staff, staff would have given it approval, and then it would have gone to council?
So through the Chair, Commissioner, one, this project is before the Planning Commission rather than the staff hearing officer because of its location, which is in the hillside design district.
And I understand that, yes.
And if it wasn't SB 9 project, say it wasn't in a high-fire area, it would just be purely ministerial, so it would not go to anybody.
Oh, it would just get approved. Staff would approve.
That's correct.
Staff approval, okay. I just have another question. For this particular zone, what is the minimum lot size for these projects, for the lot, size of the lot?
The minimum lot size depends on the slope percentage. So that's why I was saying Lot 1 has a steeper slope, it's 29.07, so they need a minimum of two acres. They're proposing 2.5 acres.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bauckey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've just got one question for the applicant toward the, the owner, is to the stated reason to go through all this effort. Could you explain sort of your, your thought process of why you chose to do this? Because this is not a cheap endeavor, just to start with.
Yeah, so as I stated in the presentation, it's just for future estate and family planning purposes. They want to clean it up now while they can.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I will now put it up to Commissioner Commons. Who would like to go first? Comments? Commissioner Wiscombe?
I, I can, I can support, can support the, the lot split on the project and the setback modification. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, Vice Chair Boss?
Thank you, Chair. I can also support the, the findings, and just wanted to appreciate consideration for the coastal live oak woodland. So rather than creating a new driveway through that area, just thank you for preserving the oaks.
Commissioner Bauckey?
I definitely support the application. I definitely believe this is a much better situation than trying to cram a driveway down that hill and destroy the environment. So thank you for considering an alternative.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yeah, I can support, support modification. This is a hardship, obviously. There can be a number of reasons why it is a hardship. And as far as, you explained to us why you want to do this, and that's fine. Just projecting down the road, if you ever go to sell these pieces of property, I don't know what that would do to the, the easement situation, but we're not there today to talk about that, so, so I'll just leave it alone.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only observation, and completely in support, no question about it, it's rare that you see such a pro forma project that should be approved at some lower ministerial level. And I'm, I'm always surprised a little bit at how little planning we do. And it would be nice if this Planning Commission could assist the staff in finding these kinds of things in the ordinance, so that we can streamline it and not have this come in front of the Planning Commission if it is a ministerial thing. Maybe it would include having a Planning Commissioner be in on a discussion, bring it back to the Commission, and we very, you know, we very easily ministerially approve. But something should be done, so that these kinds of things don't necessarily have to come in front of us. But I certainly, I think it's a great project. Congratulations for putting it together.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you so much for having us during the site visit. I am supportive of the project, can definitely make the findings, so thank you. Now I will open it up for a motion. Anyone interested in making the motion? Poor Leslie.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we've, the Planning Commission finds the following. A is the environmental review, qualifies for an exemption from further environmental review. B is the street frontage modification, as described in the staff report. This is for Lot 1, granted relief from 100 feet minimum frontage. And C would be the tentative map subdivision is consistent with the general plan and the zoning ordinance of the City of Santa Barbara. These findings are on page 7 and 8 of our staff. of Santa Barbara. These findings are on page seven and eight of our staff report. And in addition to that, make the following modifications to the conditions of approval. And I'm just going to read them. On page 2, 1D of the conditions of approval, just strike the clause, "Some of these conditions may be waived for demolition or rough grading permits at the discretion of the department listed." So that just gets struck in its entirety. And then also on page 2, 1D, small C, revise this as follows. Implementation requirements. All of these requirements shall be carried out by the owner and/or owner's agent, period. And that's the changes to that.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Great.
Good.
Commissioner Peterson will second it. Ms. Carmen, can we please have a roll call?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I'll begin with Commissioner Wiskom.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauckey?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boss?
Yes.
And Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. This action of the Commission is subject to a 10 calendar day appeal, period. Thank you all very much. All right, well, that brings us to new item B, 1230 San Andreas Street. The project consists of a proposal for a one-lot subdivision to allow the conversion of seven rental units to ownership units. We have Ms. Plummer, again, Associate Planner with us, to do our staff presentation. Ms. Plummer, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this next project is located at 1230 San Andreas Street. The project that's being presented to the Planning Commission for consideration is a one-lot subdivision to allow conversion of seven rental units to ownership units, condominiums, under the average units height density IUD incentive program. Similar to the last project, there is no development proposed. The existing building is there, as well as all site improvements are already there. And to the right is just a view of the existing structure. This is an aerial view of the project location. So you can see that here. This is San Andreas Street. West Victoria Street is here, West Santa Pummo Street. Bonnet Park is directly adjacent, and then this is San Pascual Street. The required actions under the purview of the Planning Commission is a tentative subdivision map for a one-lot subdivision to create seven residential condominium units, a condominium conversion permit to convert seven rental units to seven ownership condominium units, and also to affirm the secret determination for the project. So as some background, as mentioned, there is an existing development on-site with a three-story apartment complex that was developed and approved under the IUD program recently, and previously received design approval by the Architectural Board of Review. This apartment complex was recently constructed and only received certificate of occupancy on March 21st of this year. Prior to the certificate of occupancy being obtained for the structure, the applicant had filed a planner consultation regarding the process and entitlements to change the ownership structure. The applicant had noted that the owner of the building wished to record a map to allow individual units to be sold separately at some point in the future, but also that the owner did not wish to sell off any units now and intends to retain ownership of all seven units as long-term rentals for the foreseeable future. During this time, because the building was still under construction, there were no existing or prospective tenants. The applicant then filed a pre-application review, team application, where staff reviewed the project and expressed general support. I do want to note that this particular project, while it did require a PRT at the time, we've since disbanded that requirement as of March 27th, so this type of project would no longer require a PRT review. They could just submit for a formal application. This is a table to the right, which you would have received in your packets. Again, there's no development proposed. The existing building complies with required setbacks, building height, parking, density, unit size, open yard, all of that. The units will remain for the purpose of residential use. In terms of subdivision ordinance consistency, the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance, as already mentioned, in that it's in an area RM, which allows for a variety of multi-unit housing types. It's also consistent with the general planned use, land use designation, a medium-high-density residential. It's physically suitable for the site in that there's no change. And the overall character of the immediate neighborhood is a mix, but generally there's a lot of multi-unit residential development adjacent to the site. And then there's no damage to fish or wildlife or public health concerns, again, as the project only allows flexibility in ownership structure change. Due to timing with this particular project, because certificate of occupancy was granted, even though the building was very recently constructed, they are required to comply with the conversion ordinance of rental units to condominiums. The overall purpose of this section in the ordinance is to establish criteria to reduce impacts associated with this type of conversion on residents, so existing residents, and to maintain rental housing for low and moderate income households. Again, because of the timing of this, because they were only granted certificate of occupancy on March 21st, and even later they were looking at prospective tenants, this section of the ordinance doesn't really fit the general criteria, even though it applies. The applicant has complied with noticing to any prospective tenants about this application moving forward through the city. And I do want to point out that while the tentative map is requested to allow these to be ownership units, the owner may retain the units for the foreseeable future as rental housing, but can ultimately sell them individually at some point in time. Also, the original IUD project, which was a rental project, did not include any low and moderate income households as part of that project. They instead opted to do an inclusionary in lieu housing fee, and there's no change with respect to this project in terms of that. However, on the next slide, I'll talk about the change in fees associated with that. So condominium projects are subject to the city's inclusionary housing ordinance for ownership units. It's actually quite similar, except for how the fee is calculated to rental, in that 10 projects involving 10 units, less than 10 units and more than one unit may provide at least one owner-occupied moderate-income restricted unit, or pay to the city an in lieu fee. So for the original rental project, the in lieu fee was $158,200. And for the condominium project, this is the fee multiplied by the seven units, and that gets you to $216,237. So included as a condition of approval for this project, they will have to pay a remaining balance of $58,000. In terms of the physical development standards that apply to this project, there is a minimum unit size. The units are a little over 900 square feet, so they exceed the minimum unit size. They satisfy the parking requirement. Each unit has a private garage. There's storage provided, separate metering areas for washer and dryer provided. Again, the project complies with open yard and density. And to the right is just a picture of the existing building. In terms of general plan consistency, this project site is in the west side neighborhood. This is San Andreas Street here. This is Bonnet Park, so actually, that's really helpful because the project site is right here. And the overall neighborhood includes a mix of single-family, duplex, and multifamily units. Projects between San Andreas and the 101 for this neighborhood have the highest level of density. So the project is consistent with LG 4, which is included in your packet, as well as LG 6, location of residential In terms of the housing element, the project, while it's built, certainly complies with Policy 1.2.1 about infill housing to develop on sites near transit and jobs, particularly sites suitable for housing, 1.7, to prioritize residential on-site zone for residential uses. And particularly for this project, Policy 2.3, ownership housing, because it encourages development of smaller ownership units that provide pasta homeownership for first-time buyers. The building is existing, but it does provide seven units to the city's housing stock. In terms of the circulation element, the site is between West Ariaga and West Victoria Street, as I previously showed on a map. It is also in a high-quality transit corridor. San Andreas is a high-quality transit corridor, and the overall area is in the quarter-mile buffer of the high-quality transit corridor. Within a block-walking distance, there's multiple active bus stop locations. The project also provides vehicle parking for each unit and bicycle parking for each unit. And again, because there's no change, there's no development proposed to the site, the project qualifies for Secret Guideline Section 15061B3, again, the common sense exemption, because there's no physical change to the environment. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the tentative map and condominium conversion permit, as well as affirm the secret determination. And I did notice in the staff report, there were just a couple typos on the tentative map finding. So if the Planning Commission ultimately decides to approve the project, I would just ask that you use this. It just cleaned up, there was a couple typos in that. But essentially, it just says the project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance, the use is permitted on-site as residential, and is allowed with the zone and neighborhood, it's physically suitable, there's no change, there's no cause of substantial environmental damage, et cetera. So, yeah. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Plummer. We will now hear from the applicant. Please come up and state your full name and relationship to the project for the record. You will have 15 minutes to present. Ms. Carmen, would you please start the timer?
Can I get my present? Great. Hi, Jarrett Goran from Vanguard Planning, and I represent the property owner on this project. And this, we had intended to do a tentative subdivision map only on this, and that's what we turned in. We turned that in in February. There was this mandatory pre-app process we had to go through, so we switched our application over to that. And then while the city was processing our pre-app, which now is no longer a requirement, my client, like many of my clients, was in a hurry, and he called for a final inspection on the building. So I think they did that final inspection literally the same day that we got our pre-app letter from the pre-app we applied to. But as a result of that, even though this is a brand-new building with no tenants in it, now they're existing rental units, so that's what triggered this requirement for condominium conversions. And if you go through and look at your condominium conversion standards and the ordinance in detail, they do address tenant displacement, but a lot of what they address is basically the physical attributes of a structure. So I think, you know, they're pretty easily intended to, if people are taking some old apartment building, and they want to turn it into condominiums, and it probably wasn't designed to meet what condominiums need to meet, there's this whole checklist of development standards you have to meet. So it outlines all those. And then there's these building condition audits and all these other things. So if you're going to take some old building and now turning it into condominiums, and it's going to go into a homeowners association, there's a lot of issues that could come up if it was in a building that was built decades ago that, you know, it wasn't designed to be like that. So there's all these steps to go through and make it into a condo. This one, like I tell most of my clients that do multifamily housing, even if it's not proposed as condominiums originally, I tell them, let's design it to meet condominium standards upfront, so that if you ever did want to change it in the future, you could. And this client was my client on the original multifamily application. So we did that, and this building meets all of the standards. There's no mystery to why that is. So I don't have much to add to what PLR went through. I can just show you some other photos of it. So there's an aerial. You can see we got solar on all of this project. The project's all-electric, so one of the questions we got in our first incomplete letter was, where's the gas meters? And we don't have them. So here's another view of it. Again, these are the best before-and-after photos of a project you'll ever see, because it's, there's no changes here at all. Here it is from the street. And then I'll just, a couple of these photos are just to the standard. So yeah, every project, every one of the units has its own garage. There are attached garages. They have the car and storage in there. And then here's our water meters. And there's eight of them, because we have an additional meter for the common area landscaping, so that that's not coming off one of the unit's meters. There's our electrical meters, so they're all separately metered. And yeah, just, that's the project. Like, why are we doing this? The client wants to have some flexibility in the future. All these units are rented to long-term tenants. They, we did disclose to everybody and got the city's Form B signed from everyone before they moved in. But there is, the IUD program has been pretty successful in producing a lot of rental units, but there are very few ownership units that have come out of that program. And this project would create the opportunity for some ownership units. And there's different reasons why we would want to have that in the future. Some of these tenants might want to buy one of these units if it was available. And there's also, I've dealt with a bunch of different people that wanted to do, not on this project, but just in general, employer-sponsored housing. And a lot of those programs work through loan assistance to the employees. They aren't like rental assistance, so they'll give somebody really favorable loan terms or down payment assistance, and it needs to be an ownership-for-sale unit to do that kind of a thing. So we wanted to have that available in case that opportunity came up in the future. But in the meantime, the client's just going to hold on to this and rent out the units, and we're just going to record this map so that they could be sold individually in the future. So it's everything I have for you. And if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you very much for your brief presentation. Ms. Carmen, would you please let us know how much time the applicant has remaining?
Thank you. You have 10 minutes and 9 seconds remaining if you choose to use it.
Wonderful. You will have the opportunity to utilize the remainder of your time after Commissioner questions, if you'd like. And that takes us to comments from members of the public pertaining to this specific item. Ms. Carmen, do we have anyone in person or remote?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. At this time, I don't have any speaker slips for in-person public comment. We do not have any participants online, and we did not receive any written correspondence for this item, so I'm going to give it back to you.
All right. I will open it up for questions from my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is how it interfaces with Bonnet Park. When we look at a project like that, it doesn't have any on-site green space, et cetera. I'm wondering, there's no gate that opens up to Bonnet Park. I don't know what's on the other side of that fence. Is it a future possibility that that could become, excuse me, that there could be access to that park or not?
Could I have the laptop back up, please? Chair Wardlow, Commissioner Barnwell, there actually is a fair amount of green space on this project. It's just, it's all down here. So this is an L-shaped lot, which goes all the way down here, basically to the creek, and then up here. And then all of this portion of the lot is green space. There isn't really the ability to interface with the Bonnet Park, because Old Mission Creek is in between us and the park. So there's no way to, like, get back and forth across that.
And how about the tenants accessing that green space that you're referencing, too?
That's accessible from the site, but it's generally in a condition that was a habitat restoration condition. So when we did the original project, we had to do biology surveys and habitat studies and pull out invasive species and put in a bunch of new native species. So it's really more of a passive visual type of an open space than a active recreation space. However, if you walk right out onto the sidewalk and make a right, about 100 feet away is Bonnet Park.
Correct, yeah. It, on my, I unfortunately didn't make the site visit with the commission, but I did go later, and there isn't a gate opening to that green area that you've discussed. So if a tenant wanted to go there, it hasn't been landscaped for that use, correct? That green space is not landscaped for the use of any of the tenants.
It, the, Chair Wardlow, Commissioner Barnwell, no, the green space on our site is more of an open space, habitat space next to the creek, rather than a- of an open space, habitat space next to the creek rather than a recreational space.
But there's no prohibition. What I'm trying to get to is, you know, paths of preference, et cetera. A couple of years from now, these people want to go there and hang out. Is there a, there's no prohibition that's on the site? They could if they wanted. Who knows? That's down the line.
I don't remember if there's an actual fence prohibiting it, but we, on the original project, we did what was required on that project with respect to habitat protection on there. So, I mean, I suppose if somebody's dog gets out, it might run down there. But there's not really a reason for people to go down there. It's pretty steep, and it's pretty wooded, and there's a park that you could pretty easily walk to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bauckey.
Jarrett, don't go anywhere. First question is to you. Is there, what was the reason why your client didn't apply for this as a condo project at the beginning versus after, sort of after the fact? I mean, did you have a conversation with him, and he just chose not to do it and went through this process? I'm just trying to understand the thought of your client and why he wouldn't have just gone and do that.
Sure, Chair Wardlow.
And then the next question will be to Pilar. Is there anything physically different between the requirements and the AUD projects for condos, ownership versus rental, substantively? Okay, so let's start off with Jarrett.
All right, Chair Wardlow, Commissioner Bauckey. I did mention this upfront. This project started in like 2020, and at that time, the client wanted to get through the process as fast as he could, and he wanted to do rental units, and that was his original intention, and he's using the project as a rental project right now. So doing a map, there's a lot of additional expense with the map, there's a lot of additional time in the process with the map, and at that point, it didn't make sense for him. So I said, well, just make sure you design these so that you could do it in the future if you ever decided to. But he just wanted to go through and have the Architectural Board of Review be the final decision-maker on it so that he could get a building permit sooner and build out his project. So that was, that was the reasoning here. There's, we didn't, like, get out of anything by not doing a map upfront. What we got out of was just some additional expense and time. But the project, the standards it meets and everything are all the same as they would have met for condo standards back then. And I'm going to partially answer your second question. If we had done this purely as a rental project under AUD, there are fewer things that we would have needed to do on that project than what we actually did. So you're not required to have, for example, laundry in every single unit in an AUD project that's just rental. So we went above and beyond what the requirements would normally be for an AUD project with the idea that my client or some future owner of the project or somebody might someday want to do a condominium conversion and meet the standards. So we did the opposite of, like, getting out of something. There was no, like, maneuvering that happened here, if that's your concern.
Yeah, thank you. Pilar, as to any particular, is there any other standards? You know, Jarrett mentioned one. Is there some, anything else? And then I've got a question beyond that, but it's not a planning question, so.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Bauckey. No, I'd essentially agree with Mr. Goran. So in terms of the process, the AUD program allows either for rental or ownership housing. They could have proposed, you know, condominium development as part of the original project. The only thing that would have been required is the same entitlements that are before you this afternoon, which is the map and the physical standards for condominiums, which they're meeting. So that would have been the only other item, other than Architectural Board of Review approval.
Okay, so my follow-up question, which is why you said it's not a planning thing, is, is there any building code difference, especially in the concept of firewalls that this project would have to be constructed to as a for-sale condo unit versus a rental? Many communities have those more rigid requirements, and I wasn't sure if this project has been built to those fire code standards in this case. It may have been, and maybe they planned to do it, as Jarrett says, ahead of time. But I want to make sure that's done in this case. And I had another comment after that.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Bauckey. So this, this project went through substantial review with Building and Safety, with Transportation Division, with Public Works, to assess that it's meeting the requirements for condominium development. So the answer is yes.
I can answer that even more specifically. The standards are the same. They're, they're all, the fire separation standards, there's a noise separation rating standard that all units have to comply with. Even ADUs have to comply with that. If you convert your garage to an ADU, you've got to provide that fire rating and that noise rating. So this project meets all of those same ratings. They're kind of universal. They're not specific to condos.
Yeah, and because back, dating myself back in the 80s when I was a community development director, condo conversions were a big thing, and they were converting, for the economics worked at that point in time, that people were converting a lot of rental buildings to condominiums. And of course, they weren't built necessarily, and then that got into a big mess about fire ratings and noise ratings and all that. I just want to make sure the folks that are moving into these things, when they are condos, are getting a condo, like, standard of quality of life. Thank you.
And just to add on to that, Commissioner Bauckey, those standards have essentially caught up, so they are now the same as Mr. Goran mentioned. For the City of Santa Barbara, what we were quite concerned about originally with condo conversions was the aesthetics, that there was this feeling that condos should be held to a higher standard. With brand-new buildings, there is no difference in that aesthetic standard for rentals or condos. So I would agree with Mr. Goran that this meets everything and was built and could have been approved either way. What I have heard is also that it takes quite a long time to get things recorded through the county right now, and you cannot issue a building permit for a condo until we have that map recorded. So I would also agree that the timing would have held this up if they had done the map first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Boss.
Thank you, Chair. I think first, just a question for staff and then for the applicant. So I am curious about LG4, so that encourages workforce and affordable housing within a quarter-mile of frequent transit service. So you talked about that on San Andreas, but I'm struggling to find where the workforce and affordable housing is in here.
So through the Chair, Commissioner, so one, it does provide potential workforce housing, right? These are smaller units, around 900 square feet. The original rental project, as it was approved, didn't include any moderate income units. They were all market rate because the applicant opted to do an in-lief fee, which is another way of how we get to addressing affordability. So the fee that I mentioned earlier, they originally paid $158,000. They'll have to pay a bit more with this particular project to balance that out. But that all goes into the city's Affordable Housing Fund, so.
Okay, thank you. Can you give me the definition again of workforce housing?
Oh, definition.
Commissioner Boss, we do not have an official definition of workforce housing.
Okay, so I'm still not finding how this is workforce and affordable housing. I understand that it's contributing to a fund that will someday maybe produce affordable housing, but it's, this is not actually affordable housing. It's not actual workforce housing because we don't have a definition of a workforce housing.
Commissioner Boss, I would agree, this is not affordable housing, whether or not it's workforce. In the past, there has been discussion that workforce housing could go up to 160% AMI. I don't know their rents, so I can't confirm that. But what we did find with our AUD study is that many of the units did qualify, if you consider workforce housing, to go up to that percentage.
Up to 160. Okay, thank you. Then this leads into my question for the applicant. I appreciate that. So are there currently tenants in this building?
Chair Wardlow, Vice Chair Boss, yeah, every single unit is occupied.
Okay, thank you. And then you mentioned employer-sponsored ownership assistance programs, so those are presumably affordable. That's why I'm trying to reconcile the workforce and affordable housing. So is that the intent to, the employers of the current tenants would potentially assist them in purchasing the units?
Chair Wardlow, Commissioner Boss, we don't specifically have an arrangement for employer-sponsored housing on this. And what I was explaining is that that is one way that employers create more affordable housing for their employees. So we haven't engaged with any on this, but having these as condominiums makes that a possibility where it would not be if this was just a multifamily project. So like, for example, I've had clients that I worked on with ADU projects that were employed by Cottage Hospital, and they had a program where they gave really favorable loan terms to that employee that allowed that employee to buy a house. The house wasn't restricted anyway. It wasn't deemed workforce, which we don't have a definition for, but it was just a house on the market. But because it was a for-sale unit, the employer was able to help that employee secure that house by giving them loan assistance, which doesn't exist in a rental property. So that's what I'm talking about, when I'm talking about that.
Okay, thank you. And are all the tenants, are they all employed by the same company? Or you may not know this.
Chair Wardlow, Vice Chair Boss, they aren't. They're just seven tenants that rented the units.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for now. Thank you. Commissioner DeLucio.
Thank you. I went by there yesterday. I did the site visit. I was probably the only one that showed up. And I didn't see anything going on there, anybody living there, but I guess they were. Maybe they're at work or something. But I did notice that, so the land says, half of this property is, percentage-wise, is landscaping, correct, in the back? Because it says 45% is landscaping of the lot coverage. That was kind of interesting. 6,000 square feet is landscaping. So now I know where that is. We threw that, and I think the project looks really nice, by the way. I just want to throw that out. And where do the bicycles, I'm just curious, where do the bicycles park in there? Where's the space for bicycles? In the garages?
Chair Wardlow, Commissioner DeLucio, yes, there's space in the garages for that. So that's providing covered, secure storage for bicycles and whatever else.
Okay, so my question is, you, because you wrote this in the letter and you talked about, you feel like you shouldn't have had to do the condominium conversion permit, but you had to because the pre-application held you up and you got, I guess, the certificate of occupancy on the rentals. Is that correct? So is that going to, does that cost you more by having to do the condominium conversion permit?
Chair Wardlow, Commissioner DeLucio, fortunately, no, because the staff was, it was a weird thing that happened, and it was, I'm literally a freak of nature that these two things happened on the same day. And obviously, Allison got like a passionate email from me about that. And, but the, the staff and us, we, everybody agreed what was going on, and so they allowed us to basically just process this without having to pay the additional astronomical fees for the second application that got triggered here. So we really appreciate how the city sorted that out with us.
Well, I'm glad that staff worked with you on that. Thank you very much. And especially if they did away with something, we think that perhaps it should be a grace period, you know? So if something goes away, and you're in the middle of doing something, all of a sudden it triggers that you have to go through this additional process, hopefully in the future you have something to think about, maybe you need to have some kind of grace period between when something goes away. And so we can, we're all about streamlining, and so we can get these projects through quicker. But thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wiscom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, so all the units are rented. Is the owner allowed to take two or three of the units and sell them and keep the rest as rentals? Can it be mixed up that way? I just want to make sure that's the case.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Wiscom, yes. I mean, once the map records, once they do all the required agreements for this particular project, then yeah, he could opt to have some of the units remain as rental, some could be sold, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Goran, how, what, what do the tenants sign? In other words, if he decided to convert, you know, units one, two, and three to ownership units, what sort of agreement did these tenants sign in terms of, in terms of that?
Chair Wardlow, Commissioner Wiscom, I don't have the specific lease. What I know that every one of the tenants did sign is the acknowledgement that they knew the project was submitted, that it was going to go forward, that there's potential that, you know, they might need to vacate in the future if they had to go because something got sold. So everybody had upfront notice of this before they decided to rent there. I don't know what the lease provides in terms of if they decide to sell, what happens. What I do know is, I know they're on year leases, and if I'm in the middle of a one-year lease and somebody wants to sell the house I'm in, I'm still in that lease. And that's another thing I would point out. This is just a lot of flexibility here that this creates. So yeah, he could sell one or two of those units, and he might sell it to somebody who wants to keep operating it as a long-term rental. It's totally possible that he could sell Unit 7 down there to somebody else who wants to own a unit that they plan to use as a rental unit and that it's an occupied rental unit that's cash-flowing. Somebody, people buy things like that all the time. So there's just a lot of flexibility here, and the owner could buy. I mean, there's, there's just so many different scenarios, and all I can tell you for sure is that in a lease, if they're entitled to that lease period, they can't get kicked out when the unit gets sold.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And I, I think this is a brilliant plan of attack for the owner. I think it's, gives the owner a lot of flexibility, so economic flexibility. So, okay, that's all my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Commissioner Boss? Sorry, I do have one more. So if the unit was to be sold while the person is still in their lease, what are the requirements for relocation benefits, or are there any? Chair Wardlow, excuse me, Wardlow and Commissioner Boss, I don't believe that there are any because of the notification that they were given prior to moving in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, I appreciate the questions from my fellow commissioners. I do not have any questions, so we will move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Bauckey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jarrett, thank you for bringing this to us, because it's interesting, the story on this one, just, just interesting how you got there. But we'll leave it as that. But I definitely support the project. I think it's a good example of, you know, meeting policy 2.3 of our housing element and having ownership, smaller ownership units, as the policy calls for, is a very important thing to go with all these rentals. I mean, you know, most of the stuff we're seeing through the process is rental, and it's sort of an, in, it used to be the other way around, and you know, you sort of jump from one end of the spectrum to the other. This kind of project is helping with trying to get a balance, and I honestly believe this, the community's much better off if there is a balance. So I will be supporting this project. Thank you.
Vice Chair Boss?
Thank you. I'm supportive as well and can make the findings. Just a couple of comments. I am excited about the opportunity for working with employer-sponsored ownership, and even if an employer purchased several of the condos and rented it out, I think that's a great opportunity to actually serve the workforce. I'm a little disappointed we still don't have a definition of workforce, even if it was up to 160 AMI, that wouldn't, I understand the rents were, they were posted online at about 5,500, so that would not, that's beyond 160 AMI. So even if that was our definition of workforce, this would not qualify for workforce and doesn't qualify as an actual affordable housing yet. So I just, I think just comments to staff, if we're saying that this is workforce and affordable housing, but it's not workforce, in part because we don't have a definition, and it's not actual affordable housing, just want to be careful about saying that it's in line with that policy. But those are my comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair Boss. Commissioner Wiscom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can definitely support the project. We don't see many projects where you have the opportunity to own a unit. So I think this is a, I think this provides great flexibility for the owner, gives some, and I also think that it... this provides great flexibility for the owner, gives some, and I also think that it provides down the road potential opportunities to actually have ownership of something in the city, which, which I think. So I'm totally in favor of this project. I think, I think it's a very nice one. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question for staff. It seems to me, I remember a long time ago that long driveways that went into a parcel had to have some kind of a turnaround to be able to nose back out when you came on the public street. Is that not a thing?
Chair Wardlow and Commissioner Barnwell, there are standards for fire department if you reach a certain length where they do need turnaround. But in terms of the vehicle parking for this project, because they're in garages, they do have turnaround. So if there are any additional spaces, for example, at the end of the driveway, then they might need that. It also depends on the width of the driveway, if there's enough room to completely back out and then nose forward. So it typically is related to fire access.
Okay, thank you. And that brings up, because I've been by twice, and I went by earlier this afternoon, and I drove my car up the driveway, and there's nothing you can do. You got to back out again. But it wasn't so much the thought of me, but it was the thought of guests. Anyway, just throwing that out there. Another question is, how does the homeowners association work? Is it a democracy and the decisions are made by the owners and they do what they want?
We are into deliberations at this point.
I want to know how that works. How does the HOA work? Is that not correct? Can I not, can I ask that question?
You can. One more question, but we are into deliberations now.
Chair Wardlow, Commissioner Barnwell, how do HOAs work? I'm a member of one. Most people that are, you know, HOAs are an interesting thing. They, they are a democracy. Every owner owns an undivided, like one-seventh interest, in the case of this project, in all of the common areas, which are like the driveway, the landscaping, the building itself is a common area. You own the airspace walls in of your unit, but everything is HOA-controlled, and everybody in the HOA has a vote about what happens to it.
Okay, okay, thank you. I thought, we're not allowed to ask these kinds of questions at this deliberative point? Or we are? No?
Well, we do, we do questions, and then we do deliberations. It's fine, just.
Okay. I also want to echo what was said about these ownership units. The Chamber of Commerce put together a seminar a year or two ago on how employers could provide housing for their employees. And their approach, 100%, was that the employers had to buy an apartment building of nine or 10 or something units, which was a huge amount of money for any small-time employer to come up with. This is a very good solution, and I think it's something that maybe we might want to advertise a little more, the idea that there's an ownership component available in these ADUs when we do them this way. Because I think, we were always talking about, how do we, how do we provide housing for the small employer, not the cottage hospital, but the small employer has three or four people. And this is really something new for me to even think in these terms. So I'm glad you're doing it, and I'm very supportive of the project. And it's beautiful from the street as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeLucio?
I think it's a really nice project for the neighborhood. And I'm not going to read too much into it. I'm glad we're getting the in-lu fees, but it is what it is right now. This is market-rate housing. These are rental units right now. And eventually, I'm supportive of the trap map, but eventually they could become condominiums. You could do, you'll have flexibility to keep them as rentals or convert them over. The only thing I'm concerned about, which is not going to stop me, I'll vote for this, is that we're going to be possibly, potentially, again, be in a situation where we're going to be displacing tenants in the future. So I'm just going to throw that out there. So I'm not going to read it much into it. Oh, this could be workforce housing, this could be that or this. Right now, they are rental units. Potentially, they could be condominiums down the road. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
Yes, I'm generally supportive with what's been said here. I think, you know, we're seeing a lot of rental unit projects come before us, and so for ownership is something that's been talked about and is needed. And so this is an interesting opportunity to provide for the opportunity for more ownership units. I do agree that the tenant situation is not ideal, that tenants could lose their housing. We're limited on what to do about that because of state law. And so there are restrictions here that the city only has so much flexibility for. So with that, yeah, I'll support the motion, whoever ends up making it.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, staff, and thank you, Jared, for this project. I am supportive of the project and can make the findings. I echo a lot of the sentiments shared by my fellow commissioners just regarding the importance of really, you know, not sharing that something is affordable housing or workforce housing if it's, you know, if we're really not there. But I agree with Commissioner Peterson's points on, you know, the importance of having the flexibility and the ability to have more options to purchase. So thank you. And with that, I will hear a motion?
I'm going to make the motion.
Commissioner Peterson?
Can you?
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate that, Commissioner Wiskom. So along with the recommendation for approvals, if the motion maker is comfortable accepting staff's revision to the tentative map finding, that's the only one to have some cleanup uptight those.
Yes, so.
Oh, the recommendation. There we go. Sorry.
Right. And so that we would adopt this recommended motion and the amendments in that you put forward in the tentative map. That's my motion.
Thank you. Wonderful. Can we please have roll call?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I'll begin with Commissioner DeLucio.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiskom.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauckey.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Boss.
Yes.
And Chair Wardlow.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carmen, and thank you to the commission and the applicant and staff. This action by the commission is subject to a 10 calendar day appeal period. And with that, we will now move on to our administrative portion of our agenda. Does anyone have any committee or liaison reports? Commissioner DeLucio?
Yeah, okay. I have a staff hearing officer report. Three, there were two projects that became before the hearing officer. And the hearing officer now is Tess Harris. And the projects that came before her are payable, payable to the planning commission within 10 calendar days of yesterday. One was 317 West Alamar. That's in the Oak Park neighborhood. There's an approval for an open yard modification for new ADU. And then second project was 1260 North Ridge Road, and that's in the Foothill neighborhood. And that was approval of a front setback modification to allow new floor area to be constructed. That's my hearing officer report. And then I have one on Historic Landmarks Commission. A little behind on that. I'm going to report on the meeting from the middle of July, July 16th, Historic Landmarks Commission. They welcomed a new commissioner at that meeting, our former commissioner in large, and they reviewed design progress on two projects which had come before the planning commission. One was 1533 State Street, that's the Cantwell IV Co-op Market site. And the second one was 101 Garden Street, the hotel. Both projects received project design approvals and project compatibility findings, and both those projects need to return to HLC for an in-progress review before receiving final approvals. That's my report.
Thank you. Any other reports? And I see the city administrator would like to, Mr. Busk.
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. While everyone was here, I just thought I would get some feedback from you regarding next week's site visit to 996 and 1,000 West Mountain Drive. That site is kind of a distance out of, you know, the downtown, and so the question is if you'd prefer to drive separately or if we should try to schedule a carpool, that would be easier?
Separately, I prefer.
Yeah, I'd rather, is everybody in agreement to drive on their own?
Okay, well, if anyone does decide they want a carpool, if they can just contact us and we can get that scheduled, but it sounds like in general, you'll be driving separately.
Yeah, or we can coordinate among ourselves and, you know, carpool. But I don't think we need the city's assistance, but thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Bauckey?
One question. It's, it's to our city attorney about when we might be seeing or think about seeing a legislative update since the folks in Sacramento have been very, very, very busy. And it's, you know, as one that actually tries to track this stuff, it's almost impossible at this point to even know. And I was just wondering where you're at on your, especially on the housing side of things. How have you done on your review? And how close are you to being able to educate us to?
Well, Commissioner Bauckey through the chair. As you probably know, AB 130 came out and SB 131, and I think that's something that, that's the trailer bills. And I think that's something that the commission should probably be informed of. I'm still trying to wrap my head around a lot of it, particularly as they are applying to our projects. But it is something that I'd like to bring before you. Probably, it would be September, because I want to see how it plays out with a couple of our projects also, so I can give you some samples, examples, particularly as it pertains to CEQA.
No, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Comments, questions? Go to the order. Mr. Barnwell?
I have one, and I guess I should direct it to the city attorney as well, but with some of these state laws that have come out that now no longer require parking for almost any kind of building. And is, how do we, as a planning commission, plan for the future? How can we get that on an agenda so that we, if we're no longer able to control some of those onsite parking issues, then we wouldn't want to completely ignore the idea of people having cars? And what does that mean for how we, as a planning commission, look into the future and then have this conversation with the city council as well? How does that happen?
Commissioner Barnwell through the chair. I'd have to think on that a little bit, just because, as you know, the state's basically preempting us on everything. So it's, it's more of a global, long planning, where I think Ms. Deisty's team would probably be looking more at that from a long-term perspective of how we plan out the city.
Well, that's, thank you very much, and that's precisely my point. We have been so focused for so long on housing, and now all of our housing projects have a potential dilemma with cars and parking, and we don't have ordinances, I don't think we have ordinances to support private parking lots in certain areas where the housing, those kinds of thought processes that we don't have. And I think we should try to get our arms around that and look at what, plan. I guess that's the best way, just plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. I appreciate that. Anything else from anyone? All right. Well, thank you, everyone. It is 217, and that concludes our August 7, 2025 Planning Commission hearing. Our next hearing is tentatively scheduled for August 14, 2025, and I hope everybody has a wonderful, beautiful day.